I hope so, too.
I guarantee you we're gonna get that one. One player left there.
One player left.
Just really love that book.
Yeah.
Just lots of paper.
It is ten o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting over.
My first say, Father, we thank you so much. It's beautiful day, Lord. I ask your blessing on this meeting, make the decisions made at this court. May you be pleasing unto you. And I ask that you remind them that we are all your children and that we look to you for guidance throughout our everyday lives. I ask that you look after each and every family represented here today. Keep them safe and at home, Lord, in the precious public name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, our allegiance to the Texas one state. Under God, law and reason.
All right. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Summers, Mr. Mice, interview.
I'd rather do it after court. Is that all right? This person?
Yeah, so you don't have anything that you want to say to the court? You're just wanting to speak one-on-one with me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Summers, did you have?
No.
No?
No.
All right. Presentation and discussion of Department Head Committee and Board of Courts.
There's a lot of people visiting.
They are. They are.
A lot of cows being here, a lot of hogs, but it's not enough. Keep showing back up. That's been giving away all our life time. I saw one thing on Beth Minns and asked her. Our county clerk to adjust that, and she did.
Oh, yeah.
We did that spelling of a name.
All right, so court reports good?
No.
All right. Court to consider approval of previous court minutes.
I'm making motion that we approve the previous court minutes with corrections.
Let me see if that was the correction that you're discussing.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Oh, you missed one? Give me the K O O.
N C E.
Okay.
And then L.
I was just trying to D, you know. Is that a promotion or a demotion?
I think it's kind of in line.
Right lateral?
Yeah. All right, all in favor? I'm just trying to move this along. Uh, Court to discuss and consider increasing project schedule of staffing.
Getting close to the end of the year, a lot of guys are being called. Gonna get a lot done. Or do the best we can.
Thank you for dropping off the telephone poles. I'm a cigar roll post. And if you have any that you want to donate, we'll certainly take those at any time. Because it says anything on hand, so, yeah.
Good. I got some, but I have to flag.
Okay. All right. Court to discuss and consider cancellation of the contract to Stately Law Firm with their consent for representation in opioid litigation and consider participation and acceptance of a settlement negotiated by the Texas Attorney General on behalf of political subdivisions of the State of Texas for the opioid litigation and matters related there, too. Um, so you've got a packet that has all of that information in there. Um, part of that is, um, that email from, uh, Mr. Stately that says that, um, they agree that Skerry County can and should proceed without regard to the arrangement with his son's firm, considering consider that agreement to be canceled with, uh, the state. This is an agreement that the, uh, the Texas Attorney General has come to with Johnson and Johnson and, uh, a distributor deal. Um, total is twenty-eight, nearly twenty-nine million dollars for all counties in the State of Texas. The distributor deal direct allocation to Skerry County would be seventy-two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. The Johnson and Johnson deal would be sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-three cents for a total of eighty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-six and ninety-eight cents.
Judge, I like money and I would, um, make a motion that we accept the terms uh, for the, uh, resolving of the lawsuit and the Attorney General, what he has, uh, negotiated for the county.
Just to let you know, there are specific ways that can be spent. It's all in there. All in favor? Uh, Court to consider accepting donations to county entities. To the senior centers, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Didn't do that on that.
I tried on the front sheet.
It is on the front sheet, isn't it?
All right. I'm gonna have to get glasses, too, Judge.
What was mine?
Oh, I just glanced at that. That's not, that's not on the front sheet. Sorry.
That's okay. And a hundred dollars, um, from an anonymous donor to the Skerry County golf course for the purpose of irrigation.
I might wish we had said donations to the senior centers.
All in favor? All right, Court to consider, or Court to hold a public hearing regarding redistricting of county political boundaries. And I am not gonna read all of that. I hope you don't mind. No, sir. Spanish is not near that good. So I've got the maps here for the This is, the first one's gonna be the initial assessment. This is what they, uh, where we were, or where we currently are until we changed. So that's the city. That's, what was it? Countywide is there. And then we also have the JPs that we have to look at. So, um, you'll remember in their discussions, uh, they mentioned going from two to one. Any thought on that at all? Keep it the same, go to one? Any concerns, Mike, on?
No, not concerns on going from two to one. That's the courts. I'm a book of best.
Yes, sir.
But we need to make sure if court changes boundaries, if you go to, uh, to the intent, are intent on the JPs or no?
Uh, no, it's from
Okay, we are, it's zoomed. So, right. Feel a little about JP precinct one is right here on the line. And when we re-jury these boundaries, we make sure that that one isn't changed because that boundary runs out along the city limits, which is right down that alley. If that boundary gets changed to the middle street, it will push JP one out of her district and thereby create a vacancy and she wouldn't be able to be in that district anymore. So I think we're okay, but that's something y'all need to keep in mind because the, uh, election precincts will be right here. The election precincts have to match voting precincts, et cetera. And so when we do the, the voting, uh, boxes, I'll need to make sure that line doesn't abolish or, or knock that JP out of the office and she's right on the line. So y'all just need to be aware of that. I did, you know, intentionally or unintentionally. That, that's the one issue that we mentioned last time, whether potentially it's a problem.
And speaking to Stan, he said that that's, that's gonna stay that way unless we change it or?
But, you know, the last time he was here, he talked about he likes to draw boundaries down the middle roadway. If it's drawn that way, you will knock that JP out for precinct. So I'm gonna have to answer your questions about that if you have them.
Ms. Summers?
So there's two JPs currently.
Correct.
And each one has to live in that specific area. If somebody new runs, they have to live in that specific area.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not countywide.
Right.
Precinct one is okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, do, do we have to change it?
No.
No.
No, we do not.
We could actually add if we, if we needed to. I don't think we need to.
Don't go there.
Well, it's just all the cards on the table. But I, I think we're good myself.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the lines.
Those lines and lines.
Have we ensured that?
Don't redraw them.
Yeah, so when we, when he came in and he showed us, he moved these lines for the When he came in and he moved those different lines, it moved for that whole voter block.
Oh, it moved.
Right, and so it didn't, we didn't move anything right in that area. So that should stay exactly the same.
Correct. But that was something we wanted to make sure because if it did move to the middle of that street, it caused problems that you might not have intended to cause.
Okay, can you hear that?
It didn't.
Right, okay.
It didn't.
Mr. Mice?
Who was it that moved the lines around?
You said he. Uh, we had, um,
Allison Bass and McGee.
Allison Bass and McGee came in, or we hired them over a year, about a year ago to work on the redistricting for us. And, uh, he came in and, uh, sat with us a month ago. And, uh, we looked at, I say he. He was actually on the computer. We, as the Commissioners of Court, agreed to what he was, the areas he was moving.
And it, they have to be done because of population.
Right. So that's a good point.
Maximum ten percent, but not, not something that they would suggest.
Right.
There's
And at some point, and I don't know if we'll do it today or it's gonna be some point in the future, you're gonna have to come back into supplemental order to harmonize your voting boxes with the new lines. You can have them crossing, uh, Commissioner precinct lines, et cetera. And so, um, I know Melody's aware and we've been looking at that and she'll look at that a little more closely. You'll have, the voting boxes will change a little bit because of the new configuration.
And I thought there was a map that showed the percentages different.
There's a paper one right here.
It's in that report and that's what this is.
Precinct two was point oh five percent. Precinct one, like negative two point eight four percent. Precinct three, one point two percent. Precinct four, one point five three percent.
Right. This is where it was before. So imagine precinct three was ten percent, four percent. So imagine the total deviation was fourteen point seven nine percent. It's gonna be five or less. So that's where all that came from.
According to the 2020 census.
Correct.
And I guess the major concern for our citizens would be that they are told, and they are, by our, uh, county clerk, that you've been moved. You're now in these voting boxes. And, or, you know, if we
Well, once we get the proper papers with the proper ranges on it, where I can see the, this is the eight hundred block to the nine hundred block or whatever, they'll, everybody will get new cards.
Good. So that, and sometimes, sometimes they don't, when we, when we have to do this, they don't, we still don't get it. They still think they're in my precinct or some other precinct that they were in before. And so that note that you have moved, uh, is good for them so that they understand that they no longer vote. And of course, you get angry calls all the time, I'm sure. But that, that'd be their concern is that knowing where they voted and at some point, uh, go to like super precincts that's been tested and lavaed. And I'm assuming that we can do that in, in the future. Can, I mean, where you can vote at Walmart.
We already do that. We already do that.
So they can vote anywhere.
Anywhere. They don't have to go to a particular polling place. They can vote anywhere in the county.
They just gotta be sure and the judges are gonna lead them to that.
Well, we'll have them on our system where they are. They'll get the right ballot for where they're in our system at.
I mean, when they come into that place that they voted at before, they're gonna tell them.
They're still gonna be able to vote there.
Yeah, you can vote here, but you're not voting for the person.
Right.
Maybe, yeah. Because they're gonna ask that question.
Oh, yeah. Why weren't you on the ballot?
Yeah.
With the changes that haven't been voted on yet, but with the changes you're thinking of, might, might get all four changed?
I think it made a variation.
Yeah, and that's what I was about to, to point out, um, some of the changes. So right here along College, um, there were some changes there. It moved over a block to take in more for, more for you, whether, yeah.
I guess my question is, is
There were changes.
Chances are everyone and everything, there'll be people in each precinct that'll get a new card. I mean, we'll all get one, but
Those will be different.
Some will be different for a precinct.
And you did more in the county to keep from having to make so many cards because of the population in Snyder, right? You did more changing in the county?
No, sir. That actually, no. So this area down here, there was a big change right in this area. Some of that, quite a bit of that went to precinct four. Um, we checked, made a change here at Toll Park to just synchronize that to where it's all in one precinct. Um, mostly that was concerned with, um, where to vote, putting the voting, uh, location in that part of the, uh, precinct.
Population changes came within the city because that's where your biggest population center is. And so to equalize those four, you had to, you couldn't get enough population out of precinct lines. It had to come within town.
Right.
That's where most of the changes affect the most folks.
Right. This was a small population area. That's why so much of it was changed there. So.
Just a FYI, in case anybody is concerned, if you have anybody asking on the precinct races. Say I was in precinct, I was in, um, Commissioner precinct four. Or say I was in precinct three. Well, we moved the line. I'm now in four. I want to run for four, but I haven't been in four for six months because we just moved it today. They still can't because if they're in that precinct now because of a line change, not because of a move they made.
Okay.
They still would be eligible to run.
Okay. This is the newest map. It says the deviation, it's under five percent.
And it has to be under ten percent for the whole, right? So we're doing good.
They, they strongly suggest you don't even get close to ten percent. Looks like it's all figured out.
If we can do anything.
Yeah. Any more thoughts or responses or questions for the public hearing portion? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Return the page. All right, Court to consider adopting the redistricting plan for county political boundaries.
I've done my motion to be a part of the plan for precinct lines, population. As presented by Allison Bass McGee.
Ms. McGee and JP. Is there anything else that needs to be in that motion?
I'll try to sign that order. I think there was a board presented. Ben O'Barrow, Kevin George was a bad, Delma Ellex signed that one.
Yeah, so. You good? You ready to second while in favor? All right. I'll sign here because
I wrote on mine.
I know I have to, just for, I have to have a copy. I don't know if I'll read it unless we have to turn it in.
Will we not ask you?
I'm not sure.
You have to turn it in to somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, Court to discuss and consider the tax abatement application of Brazos Wind Ventures LLC, including terms and conditions of any proposed abatement agreement and authorization of notice to be published and provided to other entities and setting a date for public hearing on a proposed abatement agreement, December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And Brandon Russ like is here for us today. Thank you.
All right, glad to be back. For y'all, I was up here on the solar projects. This is on a wind project. Brazos Wind Ventures. Um, this project existed previously. It was an old product, um, older turbines. And what they've come in and done, this isn't a kind of repower or the traditional type of repower where you leave the foundation and the towers and then just kind of put new to sell them blades. They pulled everything up and they're gonna rebuild the whole project, resite it. Um, so it will be a brand new, you know, brand new assets coming in. Um, and they're just asking for an abatement. Um, I believe we applied for the typical terms that the county has done in the past. Uh, the one difference that this project, um, and, and disadvantage that the project has that others don't is because it was existing project and under the name Brazos Wind Ventures, the Texas Comptroller has decided not to allow them to apply for a three thirteen with the school districts that it lies in. So it will be at a tax liability disadvantage starting, you know, starting out, um, you know, as compared to the competitors who were able to apply for and get a three thirteen. Um, so getting a, you know, getting a three twelve with the county, the college and the hospital district here are, are very important. Um, we've already gotten the three twelve done with Borden County. We finished that up last month. Um, and so these are kind of the last pieces here to get this project, um, you know, buttoned up and, and ready for them to kind of look at and get, you know, final notices to proceed going. But again, the tax abatement, uh, you know, here with all the jurisdictions are, are very important on this one seeing as we're not getting, uh, we're not able to get one from the, from the school districts.
Will, is there a new area that we're gonna talk about, bring in to that abatement?
We'll have to designate new reinvestment zones.
Richard? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, since the, since the old project was older, the reinvestment zone was only five years. So we've got to designate a new one
Okay.
for, for this to, so that we can make the, while the reinvestment zone is active.
Will there be additional towers in that area? Or is this the same amount of megawatts as we had prior?
I do not know what the old megawatts were on the project, but this one we are looking at. Yes, ninety-six.
And I don't remember.
Yeah, it's probably, probably, I'm guessing it'll be less towers because these towers will be more megawatts per tower. But I, as overall nameplate capacity, I'm not sure what the difference from, from past to present is.
This was one of our first ones, wasn't it?
I haven't looked back.
Yeah.
It was a pretty old
In my process of tax payment, because the map that's on attached to that application seems like it was one of the first ones, maybe the second.
Mississippi, one megawatt?
Yeah, it would have been like the, the one or one point eight five, one point one eight five megawatts. Those, those are not very efficient.
And these are like four point five?
These will probably be somewhere between three and a half to four megawatt towers.
And so my only concern, uh, is purchasing power that is lost over a long period of time because of inflation. And we have added a four percent inflation to other projects, uh, within the cost. So just added it upfront. And as we all know, we're in an inflationary, uh, time in our country for sure. And without food and energy, it's like, I think forecasted at two point eight percent. Uh, we've always, we've done a four percent because food and energy is real and we do have to pay that. So my suggestion to the court would be that we add the four percent for the first five years and six percent for the last five years. And do you, would y'all, you believe y'all can agree to that?
So you're talking just kicking up basically the, from going from ten forty, add four percent to that for the first five and then six percent the next? Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be, be an issue.
That just keeps purchasing power in place. Ten thousand, I mean, whatever the, the cost is per megawatt right now will not buy the same amount of whatever you're buying in ten years. And certainly not in an inflationary environment.
Or seven, six percent will catch it in ten years.
No guarantees, but at least it's better than what we had done in the first one or two of these projects.
I liked that idea because we did do it.
Oh, we've done it on several of them since, yeah.
It's probably been
Started within dinner.
Four or six years ago when you did your last
Yes.
Inflationary bomb.
Ms. Summers?
I have a big issue with this, especially now that he's saying he's gonna come here because Borden County already has. I'm gonna point out how much
Wait, what do you mean because Borden County already has?
Borden County's already made their deal with them.
In their county.
In their county.
Yeah.
And it's adjacent to Skerry County. So they're gonna come here one way or the other, tax abatement or not. He may say different, the facts are given. And you currently have two tax abatements that are related to wind, Dartmouth and Havana. They're sold a hundred percent for ten years. Looking back at the financial statements that I just was, found this out about a year ago and looking at those financial statements for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. Skerry County alone, and I'm not talking schools, college, or any other taxing entity that probably gave the same tax abatements for these two wind farms. Skerry County alone lost five point nine eight million in property taxes over three years. Granted, they got a little money in yearly for the megawatts or however they sell them. That's right at nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. He's admitted he's coming here, whether or not you've given him an abatement or not. This court needs to not give an abatement and let him come here and we can get full-fledged property taxes for everything they do for ten years as opposed to zero. Other, other taxing entities in the areas are going against tax abatements because they are realizing they are losing millions in property taxes because the majority of these entities are going in where they need to go. And he says he needs to be here. He's not gonna go anywhere else. He's not. Y'all need to keep that in mind because you're losing almost five and a half million dollars every three years on property taxes. I know the judge, he says, well, we're gonna get a hundred ninety-seven thousand from Dartmouth each year. We're gonna get a hundred twenty-one thousand Havana each year. You're losing over five million in those three years. Like I said, I sit in these meetings and I hear you say, well, that's only five something million. That's five million from the county. Let's add ten million from schools. Let's add twenty million, you know. It comes to a big chunk of money that's being lost in property taxes outright for all of these entities to give these tax abatements. And I'll say it again, there are other taxing entities in our area, our areas that are saying no to tax payments because they realize how bad they are. Thank you.
So just to be clear, we're asking for a zone to be designated and an area so that we can make the investment where we would like to. Borden County has done an agreement. There is additional land over there. So if, you know, if it's, if this court decides that they don't want to move forward with an abatement, this project has the ability to shift turbines and nameplate capacity over into Borden County where we're getting a favorable economic, uh, decision. And again, this, this is necessary because we've got to compete against combined natural gas turbines. We've got to compete against new power plants. We've got to compete against solar projects, other wind projects. We've got to compete against solar projects, other wind projects that are getting these. And really, the reason for the abatement is to get the power price that we can sell that down to a price that somebody would purchase. And if we can't get that, our tax liability down enough, you know, in the first ten years where you've got this high cost coming in to build the projects, then the project won't get financed by a bank or investors and the project won't come. And then there's no tax dollars now or down the road from the project. And so that's really kind of where we are. And again, we're asking for the county to do this. With the three thirteens, the school districts are always a win-win. We were, we were wishing we could go there because it benefits the school district because they're state funded. And so the school districts aren't giving up any money to do these agreements. Now, it's a different type of agreement than what the county and other jurisdictions can enter into. But again, if the project were to come, it, it does help still on the INS side for these school districts. So any, any bonds that have been passed or any debt that the school district is carrying, this additional value coming in will greatly help pay off that, those debts at a sooner rate and therefore lowering the property tax rate from the district. And, and again, when these come back on fully taxable after the, the first ten years, it again helps to lower that tax rate, which helps every resident of the counties that they're in.
But what's the lifespan of the towers?
So typically these projects last about thirty five. They're, they're, they're scheduled and built to last from about twenty five to thirty five years. So typically when these projects come in, when they do a lease with the landowner, they will do usually a twenty five year lease with the landowner with an option to lease for another fifteen to twenty years after that. Because the, the upfront cost of these projects is so much. Once they're in, there's not much other than just maintenance to them. And, and so they want to keep them running because they've made the, the, the big spend upfront. They're also covered for the first ten years by the warranty of if they go get GE turbines. GE covers any issues, you know, with those turbines for the first ten years. So there's not any likelihood that the project would stop operating within those ten years. We've seen a lot of the projects that were done that, that were becoming ten years old over the last four or five years. What they're doing is because the, the technology and the blades have become so much better and so much more efficient, they were just taking what they call the tops off the nacelle and then the blades and then putting those on. And so you're getting an additional influx of investment there if they're to repower. But, and then it just extends the life of the project another ten, fifteen years down the road. So they're, they're set to be here for, for quite some time because again, once it's in, it's pretty much just a, you know, operate it and let it go. There's, there's no fuel cost coming in. Your, your warranty stuff is, is taken care of for ten years. And so it's really just upkeep and maintenance to keep them going.
Let me, let me ask you this. So you're, the value is going to be five and a half million roughly?
That's what we're guessing.
Year one?
Yeah.
What is the depreciation on that? What is the value in ten years?
So what we've seen in our firm primarily does valuation and property tax valuation. And so we've got fifty two wind farms that we, solar is mandated to get down to twenty percent after ten years. We're typically seeing solar projects somewhere in the twenty five to thirty percent of the initial cost, which would be about seventy nine million. And so we've got a four percent give or take depreciation in, in the first year after it's built. But about seventy nine million so the first year it comes off the abatement. And then from there, you're usually probably around five percent, five to seven percent over the prior, the prior year's value. So not four percent a year. It's just four percent off the, the previous year's value. And then at some point, you know, we haven't got wind farms old enough to see kind of what that does. But at some point, your, your, your income will just level out and then it, it will also cause the value to level out until you start kind of having terminal failures where blades just aren't, aren't there. And, and then that's where the project makes a decision to go, okay, do we want to repower this thing with new or do we want to pull it out? And so if they were to repower with new, you'd get, you know, an influx of investment to go in and repower everything in there. And then you'd start over back on that scale again. But wind farms are done differently. So you look at when you're doing valuation, you've got the cost approach, which simply says, what did it cost you to build? And here's the, you know, a physical deterioration chart, right? That says you would, you would physically fall apart or get worse at these percentages. Then you have the income approach, which says, okay, what's your income and how long are you going to operate? And you'd get a discounted cash flow and revert it back to a value. And then you kind of blend those together. So it's a little more complicated than solar, which is just on the cost approach. But you know, it's, you end up kind of around the same. You probably end up overall with a higher base floor on solar at twenty percent. But it takes you a lot longer to get there with solar than, or with wind than it would with solar.
Mr. Mind, you had your hand up a few minutes ago.
Yes. And he actually got me, gave me another question. And maybe these are directed to him. I don't know as much as the court, but will these new windmills be under the control of ERCOT? I assume they are.
Yes, yeah. Well, it's under the control of the, the asset, right, the owner. But they will be going through the ERCOT system. They'll be putting onto ERCOT's grid.
Okay, well, the new windmills have a lower temperature operating capacity. Since, you know, this last winter, we lost those fourteen people. And they said that that was because the, the ones we have now couldn't operate because it's too cold.
That I do not know, but I can ask.
Okay, and then how will the taxes ten years out be affected on the new money system as we roll off this fee up?
Yes, that was going, that would, that's why I was asking about depreciation.
Yeah, I kind of figured that, but wanted to ask a more direct question.
Right. Yeah, it's going to depend on depreciation, what the value is at that time, ten years, as far as, as where that is. So saying four year, four percent a year off the valuation is what you were saying, Brandon, roughly?
Yeah, give or take.
So four percent off the seventy five million and then four percent off of whatever that is for ten years.
Yeah, I mean, so roughly, right, you'd go to get to eleven, you'd get seventy nine million and then take whatever twenty five percent if you want to go on the low side, right? Twenty five percent of that.
Gotcha.
So at eighty, you would be at twenty million. And so then you'd go, if you're twenty million there, you'd roughly take five percent off the twenty million. And then that would put us, ten percent would be two, so once you'd be at nineteen. And then you'd take five percent off nineteen and then five percent off. And not, you're not, you're not, you're no longer going five percent off the, the cost number.
Sure.
You're just going off the prior year. So it would slow that, that depreciation down. It, it basically just kind of goes like that and then kind of plateaued.
At year ten. After year ten.
Right.
So.
And, and the reason for that, too, you get less depreciation after year ten is because years one through ten, you're getting the production tax credit from the federal government, which is propping up that income. But you're also, it's a detriment because you're losing a year of, of potential income from the project. And so once the PTC rolls off, you're no longer losing potential, you know, potential income. It's now, it's just you've got a steady income stream that you know what it is and you can, so that kind of slows that depreciation from years ten through twenty five or thirty or whatever it is down.
Okay, all right. So that answers my question then. I thank you for doing the math on that.
Yeah.
So from about seventy five and a half million, or if it were eighty million, down to about twenty million in ten years.
Right.
And then slowly.
And then, you know, about a million or less a year.
Okay. And so tax value on that depreciates that quickly too.
Right.
So, okay. Ms. Summer, yes, ma'am.
She's made a couple of statements that I was going to cover, but I'm glad he made them. He said these tax abatements are favorable to them. He did not say they're favorable to us. Number one, favorable to them. They are state subsidized as well. And the federal government subsidizes them. As far as school districts, you may not be interested in this in this court. That's property taxpayers. It should be. School districts award a tax abatement. Dollar for dollar, our state pays that school district back, dollar for dollar of the abatement. So we not only lose out in the beginning, in the middle, we lose out in the end because it's our tax rate. Dollars that the school district is getting paid back by the state. So we're losing out big time on the school tax abatements. I'm learning this stuff. When somebody mentions a school tax abatement, taxpayers are getting, for lack of a better word, screwed over royally.
Ms. Summer, she need to go to the school district and explain that to them then. This is about the Skerry County Commissioners Court.
We're losing property taxes all around, not just through the county.
Okay. Any more discussion? Oh, he's, he's running.
Yeah, actually a couple of them. He, he was talking about some stuff that brought up some more questions. How many of the investors are foreign? What countries are they from? And do you have a list or is it sealed?
That, I don't know that they've even gone to the investors yet. I believe if I, if I, the plan right now is this company is Algonquin Power. They are a US company. And they are looking to be backed by a bigger US company that is in kind of the, like you're seeing like Googles and Amazons to come in and, and kind of partner with them to build and buy the project.
You know, this thing has been going on for a very long time and there's all kinds of assumptions that can be made. When we first started doing this, we were told by some of the people in the community that, number one, they'd never paid their bills. They always have. Number two, that they'd never repowered it, they just, and if they did, didn't repower, they would just leave the towers in place. They didn't. They also said that it would interfere with everything, with those blades and with the transmission of, of electricity. They didn't. They've been great partners, now have solar coming in. A lot of these counties that are rejecting these tax abatements are not having any of these come into their, maybe in the ten years, maybe they will. But they're losing money every year that we know we can get by doing it. And you can't have taxes paid by someone that isn't here. So you can do all kinds of assumptions and say, we're losing all this money. But look, all the money that we gained because they did come, because we were partners with them. And we're not the only ones that partnered with them. The school didn't have to do a tax abatement. Cops didn't have to do a tax abatement. They did it because it was good business, because they knew that these guys would come and they could make a, a, a deal with them. And they have paid and they've continued to pay. We've made millions of dollars whereas we might not have made any at all because they couldn't come. There's not one investor with any sense at all that's going to invest in something that they don't know what the future holds, what the costs are. That's why I, I, he asked me, Brandon did, is this four percent added into the first five years and six percent of the next five years, not figuring it year by year? Because the investors, it's not a company doing this, it's investors. And they want to know what their costs are going to be so that they can figure out what their profits are going to be. Without that, you don't have a deal. You don't have anybody necessarily that comes in these other counties that don't have them because we've got more wind and more solar than most counties in the state does. Because we worked with these people and because we have continued to, they are now wanting to repower and, and continue our relationship. That makes good sense to me and good business.
The simple fact of the matter is, do you want to call him bluff?
Well, he already, he didn't bluff. He said they will go to Borden County.
Well, that's, that's my, do you want to call his bluff? If you're willing to call his bluff and we lose all that, okay? A shameless.
Knowing what you have.
Well, I understand what Ms. Summer was talking about, but.
I do too.
It's this is going to sound strange, but it's technically, technically money we don't have coming in now. Because that one may tore down, it's gone. You're still getting the property taxes that were, but not on the turbines.
Right.
I just, I don't see how you can, I don't want to call his bluff. I really don't. Because of this. He might come here, you know, play the chance.
I think like Dan said, it's not luck. They'll, they'll just move over into other Borden County. And then we will be losing money.
And if, if that did turn me true, well, we still share those.
Absolutely.
Because they're the ones with the money.
Yeah.
Us. And I've always heard that wherever they put this wind turbine, and I've tried to correct them, that that piece of property, because this run where this turbine standing is no longer taxed. It's still taxed.
It is taxed.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And then so is the turbine and its production, blah, blah, blah. So I just, I don't know what I would.
Okay.
Only problem I have is I think them darn turbines keep the rain from coming.
We can figure out how to bring the rain in.
Mr. Mind?
Yes, why I like the fact that they do help our county. I do believe they do help any. I just think it's, it's a poor situation that it puts people in such as yourself because it is a Green New Deal technology. I just think that that's an unfortunate deal. You know, it's, it's a, you're kind of like, do you draw at the foot of the, the Green New Deal type deal?
I understand what you're saying. My thought is this technology has been coming for years. I don't, I think we need all technology. I don't think we need one to replace another. I disagree, but I think we need all of them.
Yeah, we need a gas pipeline here too as well. We produce a lot of gas. It makes sense to do one here.
I need to clarify, Mike, just let me know if I'm wrong. Today, we're not, we're not voting on the agreement. We're not voting on that. We're just, we're just like giving the court authorized notices to go out to create a reinvestment zone at a later date and go back once we get language in agreement. So there is no final decision being made today.
Thank you.
But, but for clarification, if I did my math correctly, what the court is suggesting is for years one through five, one thousand and eighty one dollars and for years six through ten, one thousand one hundred and two dollars. That sound about right to what your, your thoughts were. And that way we can go ahead if the court wants us to proceed or offer us to draft a rough agreement for the court to consider next time. But I'll make sure we're all on the same page before we start working on it.
And we'll get on, we'll work on getting, you know, if you decide to move forward, we'll work on getting road use transportation maps and all that locked down. And I'll get an answer to blade temperatures.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. You want my email so you can just?
Yeah, absolutely.
PC laser dot com. C L A Y S R A N D.
I will copy.
Are we mostly for setting a public hearing? Is that what we're actually? Not yet.
We're setting a public hearing for this.
You vote to approve the application, I think is how it's.
Approve the application first, okay.
And we'll come back at a later time after we've done our notices and have another public hearing for the actual agreement. And the next section is the designated reinvestment zone, the set of public hearing for that, because we will have to designate a new zone.
I'm like, imagine we do what Mike said.
Hundred acres located in the western portion of Skerry County as a Skerry-Borden County line reinvestment zone, number one, and authorizing publication thereof for a public hearing on December seventh, twenty twenty one. Said zone being more fully described on the attached exhibit. I'm not going to list that all out.
Judge, there should be a map attached that.
There is.
Rush the weather area, you have to drive to the corner of forty, thirty dollars to count. That's the application.
Got a lot of good person, we draw the person.
And I don't, I couldn't tell where the city of Havana, the old city of Havana was on that map. I, I fear it should be driving there. Is it?
That goes back and.
I, I, I just couldn't tell.
I can try and get a, I can get a K M Z file. I can get a K M Z file and I may send it over.
Right up in that.
Yeah.
What the L F M does though.
Yeah, I don't think that one had roads on it, did it? That's why I couldn't quite pinpoint.
So basically, all we're doing is setting the bait. For the public hearing on 10,200 acre reinvestment zone with a public hearing. Boy, I read that. That's my motion. December 7th. They've written.
All in favor. Let's go ahead and do the treasurer's report and personnel report. Personnel information report.
Okay. Does y'all have any questions?
You haven't talked yet.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking that first out, so we can get those cleared out.
It's detailed.
Detailed, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the hat.
There's not much different in the treasurer's report. This month, we did start collecting adware taxes in advance. And that will be on the next treasurer's report. You'll see that influx of money. My personnel report. Things have been kind of quiet as far as hiring and all that. Do you have some over time? Nothing out of like we were seeing.
Passive answer.
Uh, let's go. We're going to do this on the waterworks last. We'll do everything else first in case we need to go to executive session, which may not, but just to be sure. Court to discuss and consider a budget amendment for county attorney's office in an amount of $3,500 for an additional employee for the month of December for training due to an up due to an due to an upcoming retirement as well as discussion and update on future plans for replacing a retiring employee and salary and training needs connected therewith.
How's that for a long region, Bob?
Who wrote that?
I don't know. For those of you who don't know, Sheila was going to retire at the end of January next year. And she's been here 35 years and as you all know, training in that office is complicated. We've gotten taken some applications. Have not made an official offer and had one accepted yet because we would like to do two months of training before Sheila leaves. So to do that, I need a budget amendment, roughly 3,500 to cover salary for December of this year. And then we'd come back and do a lineup and transfer next year for the January, starting at a new clerk's salary, base clerk's salary. That difference can be covered by what Sheila makes right now in longevity and salary, et cetera. So it's not going to cost the county anything. Now, we'll also give you a heads up that I will request some of that excess money if we can be put in a part timeline. So that if I need to bring her back during court days or some more training after January 31st will happen. And the county will still save money in 2022 because starting the new person at the clerk level will save quite a bit of money on what Sheila with her longevity and the year she's been here and everything else. So it won't cost the county anything extra, but that's my plan. If you guys approve it for this year, then I'll come back after the first of January and ask for the line item transfers. I visited with both Kirstha and Angela and I think we're all on the same page with the way it needs to happen, court approval. So that would be my request.
It would show as a budget amendment this year simply because it wasn't budgeted, but because of the savings next year, even what we have the budget in this year will be covered in that.
You can't just walk in on the street and start that job. So I'd like to motion, we approve the budget amendment for the county attorney's office amount of $3,500 for December for training due to Sheila leaving us.
Thank you.
Just as a side, I would I would like to publicly acknowledge the job she's done for this county for 35 years.
Absolutely.
She's been dedicated to it. She's worked hard. I appreciate it. I know the court appreciates it, so I just want to say thanks to her publicly.
Yeah, it's definitely losing a huge asset.
Lot of institutional knowledge as well.
Yeah.
I don't have an actual formal budget amendment form filled out for that because I didn't know which way the court was going to go on that. But I will have it and bring the copy, the original up for you to sign or bring it to you sign since now I know.
Okay, all in favor. Very good. Thank you. Line item transfers and budget amendments.
Here's one of each. Line item transfer for EMS into dues and fuel and oil, $250 into dues, a thousand into fuel and oil out of closing allowance. And this was to cover expenses for his striker cop agreement. And then the budget amendment is for the IT department and is his other equipment line for $700. And and he's had to purchase a few items and he didn't have enough budget in there.
They were in order.
There's only two.
Make a motion that we accept the budget amendment and the line transfer. All in favor. Uh, counts payable please.
Counts payable is $514,793 plus the credit card at $15,877.65. I'm just still trying to get the final one, yeah.
All in favor. All right, court to open and consider proposals for settlement of family waterworks. One. Anybody want the other? It's me. Everybody get. This is court confidential information. Actually, the bid was from is from courts. Okay, do we want to continue to look at it for a few minutes? Or do you want to go into executive session? It is my pleasure.
We all move from a court to another.
They do have contingency plans. They have other utilities. Careful improvements. Cash basis. Appears that the offer price was in line with what we suspected. Offer price of $211,000 in response to the request for proposal issued by Scurry County for the purchase of the waterwork system. They further understand that they shall reimburse the county for out pocket expenditures in the amount of $56,500 in addition to the offer price. Yes, sir. Find your projected rates showing here. Thirty-five dollars. Where they're at. Points of clarification. Corx acknowledges that should Corx be the winning proposer, any perpetual easement documents will be prepared by Corx. However, the county's cooperation and assistance will be required. Corx is a utility regulated by the Public Utility Commission of Texas and T C Q and requirements and terms under which Corx provides services are contained in their tariff and P C O and T C Q rules and regulations.
If the court will remember the estimated contract gets T C approval roughly here is what was in hold for the sale wouldn't close, actually closed until T C approval is granted. And part of our big proposal was that we would sell it someday. So we all will remember that and understand that county will get those cash funds in hand anytime soon.
We need that going into. I said we need that going into the region.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if it was cough or if it was war. Those are those issues. I don't think you were, though.
And speaking to uh, early on when we discussed this, we did let them know that that was part of the proposal was that they would take take over basically all operations and maintenance. They did agree to that.
That would include the billing and receiving.
Correct.
We still, my thought processes were we'd still work on an agreement for the court to approve an operator agreement that spells out delineates who gets what rights and responsibilities and duties. My guess is that would take roughly 60 days to get completed and then billing switched over.
That's preferable so that when people call, we can tell them and it gives them well in advance time notice to let them know that this is done. They're mainly aware of it, but just to ensure that they know if they have an issue that they're no longer calling us, that they need to call Corx and they need to pay Corx if that goes through.
What I would see, I think, in any contract we draft and we're free as well as well as purposes for sale and purchase agreement that Corx would draft and get to the judge for signature if you would like to go with this offer.
They currently own one, two, three, four. Sixteen water systems. I believe I saw in here. Sixty-six million is what they. Yeah, when they were discussing the funding for the upfront, page 19. The excellence curve of the bottom credit facility which has capacity of 66 million.
On that resolution.
It must be a resolution.
That's what I have. I have Sean in motion, Tricia.
I'm sorry. It's not the redistricting, that's the.
We'll be.
Sign in here. That's wrong.
This one, Sergeant. This one, Sergeant. I'll probably assign that one.
What information would you need? What information do you need on?
I already have one.
That's the special for the opioid. They just took your subscription.
It's my whore.
Any thoughts on Correx and anything that y'all are concerned with? Or do you need a little bit longer to look at some of their information?
I believe so, I believe we do what we're doing.
There is definitely a ongoing company that is making profits and they are regulated by the public with the amount of charges or fees that they have and can't go up on those without their agreement to do so.
He's going to get out of here.
He sure is.
He did. All in favor? Okay, I believe that covers everything we had on the agenda. All in favor? All right, thank you, everybody. That was an intense one.
Thank you. I appreciate it.